And like call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment?
Individual for public comment.
Come on up, please.
That bridge out we talked about last time I was here, what uh? Schedule had be done or gone?
We don't have a schedule for that.
Why is that? What am I supposed to do?
I, I don't know.
Who would know if you wouldn't know?
Well, um, things haven't changed. I mean, there was a change of operation that you're in, but I mean, I, we have too many bridges that are not accessible even on, on these roads that because of a size or, I mean, it's, it's an operational bridge.
But it's not. Operational enough satisfy all of the requirements to get the in and out with farm machinery.
This is across the county is that way. We have other, I have countless bridges that would not meet the width requirements to be used.
But there is alternate routes for all these. I don't have an alternate route. We talked about that.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't want, these other ones have all the routes. My bridge ain't even on the list.
Well, just to clarify, those are bridges. You have a culvert. Yours is not a bridge.
Okay.
That's a bridge list.
It's still expensive to replace.
It is.
And it's, well, I'm gonna die before too long. You know, I'm getting that old, I'm gonna pass this on to my son. And the condition that says, hey, you got a damn farm back here, we can nobody to farm it, because they can't get in with their equipment. That's pretty good legacy to leave. You need to get this. Get this fixed. I say, there's all, all the rest of these have alternate routes. I have no alternate route.
I don't know what to tell you, sir.
You should, who, if you don't know what to tell me, we need to get somebody here to tell me.
Things have changed on your end. I mean, the farm has been accessible up until this last year, correct?
Got a different farmer. I, I thankfully farmed with myself for the last forty years, fifty years. I'm getting worried my machinery is worn out. I'm worn out, so I got somebody else to farm it with. And the people that stay in the farm business got big equipment now. So that left, left me back in there with no access for the farmers. They, the guy that puts online hunters, got big equipment. The guy that farmed, does a combine, got big truck, he can't bring his big trailer truck back in there. Cause it can't get through there with this.
The trailer could.
Yeah, but it's on corner. He's scared to rain in there, cause that bridge is right on a curve. It's failing, it's deteriorating as every time it rains. It just keeps eating back a little bit more, eating back a little bit more, eating back. You guys, you wake up?
I'm awake, I must be.
Then you have this engineer do the appraisal on it. God, they got, he talks about a seventy-five foot culvert.
And you see what, if you went according and how much it would cost to replace that when we have this, this situation over the whole county with bridges that are culverts that are insufficient for a weight or width. And to select one and you see how much it would cost, or well, I guess that, that, that's just the, the size of the
Size of.
That, you know, you're talking about five, six thousand just for the culvert alone.
It's, I can imagine why you'd want a seventy-five foot tube there.
Well, you have such a drop off on the lower inside of that, that you can't just run it out into midair and if you extend it at another twenty foot, you'd have to go to the northwest, I believe, the direction is. And then you're either gonna be running that culvert down to change for elevation. So you're gonna get a lot longer tube, or you're gonna have to rebuild that. You can't just drop your culvert out ten feet above the air, into the air. So you're, you're talking about a major uh, change, and I don't think you're gonna be able to go to the other direction, because the, it's so close to the fence that's there.
Correct.
So there's only one direction to go.
Why does it have to be seventy-five foot long? I can't understand.
Well, that was what the engineer recommends. So now you're questioning what an engineer.
Yes, I am. You ever do that?
Well, uh, you know, we, we wanted to figure things out and then, and that's what's required. I wouldn't change the requirements.
So you, you have to follow, ever down to the, Matt's asked, what are the engineers tells you to do?
When we go in with a new structure, we want it to be able to pass. Yes.
Pass.
Pass if, if there was any uh, problem, if there was someone wrecked or something, when we go in with a new structure, you want it to be able to uh, adhere to the standards that's been set forth. And so when you do go in with a, a bridge or, and a replacement, when you're actually doing the work, you don't want to be
half.
Half, yes. Thank you. So.
There's KDOT regulations that we have to follow and those.
You have to follow KDOT regulations.
Yes.
To, if you don't, what happens? Your response, so I guess if someone has an accident, that's what you were saying.
We've never not done it, so I'm not really sure what the consequences.
Yeah, we're talking about new construction. And I don't know what the standards were at the time that that was put in. I have no.
Probably wasn't. I don't know. They probably built this good bridge.
Okay, well.
Is there, is there a solution to this? Or is there a solution? Cause I think it's looking for the answer. Good. Tell me no, then that's a point.
So I know you're not in my district, but um, I have the same issues in my district as far as farm equipment has gotten bigger. Uh, we haven't kept up with the times. We have failing structures. Um, and unfortunately, there's never a good answer. Um, people have land of their own that are hiring farmers with smaller equipment that can access it. I mean, there's so many different ways. Um, and we have to, when you prioritize county needs, we have to start with the failing structures first. Funds are limited. I wish we, I, I genuinely care and we are trying to find a solution, but we can't prioritize an inconvenience when there are farmers with equipment that could access it. I know it's not the farmer that you would like to use, but there's a solution there. Um, the fact we could order the tube through the county to provide that savings, and we have a road policy that if you wanted to hire a contractor that could follow the county standards, um, could be an option. I know that's out of your pocket, which isn't the county, but it's a solution that to, to help, to help you. We, we want to help. We just can't prioritize an inconvenience over a failed structure. Um, and it's, it stinks to sit on a board and tell someone, no, and we really genuinely want to help you, but there's so many other factors that we have to take into consideration when spending the limited budget and funds we have. Um, I don't, I mean.
Even though there's no other accessible route to mine, these other ones have accessible routes to.
Well, and there's other farmers in the county that would be able to help you by farming your ground that have equipment that can access it. It's just, I know, it's not what you want to hear. I, I completely understand that. It's just, it's a bad situation for.
So you don't see. The, the size and scope of farm equipment has outpaced the ability of infrastructure, infrastructure to handle. That is, you would have thought that, you know, even ten years ago, I would have not even guessed that I would own a semi. But, and the size of the equipment has, you know, just grown so fast, even if we had a plan and had kept up to it, that it kept, we would still be behind, because there's no way that these older structures would have ever been replaced at the pace that keep up with the size of equipment.
So what the rules are for transportation services and services.
Yes.
If, if we're gonna have to get a grip on, and I realize there's different people, what they gotta grip on today? On how to uh, stay ahead of the change in, in our culture or business model. I don't know what that is. And I don't know if I, I have a solution right here speaking of it, but I feel this gentleman's pain. So.
And I do too, and I don't know. So it's hard for us to allocate resources to tell our road and bridge director, go spend time and effort on this when we have failed structures and things he needs to be focusing on. Um, but if you were to look at the road policy, find a contractor and, and get a price together, like, I don't know. I mean, I know it's a township road and two people, you and your neighbor live there and you each farm with a separate tenant that, you know, if everyone chipped in a little bit and you were able to get it accomplished on your own based to county standards, like, I'm, I'm just trying to.
I don't know. Some estimate of twenty to thirty thousand dollars. I can't afford that.
Well, I don't know if anybody would be willing to help, you know, with that being, I mean, because.
The neighbors who lives there, even, we had a tile drain terrace wave that dumps into him, comes off, the water comes off of me, but it don't send to him. And it was eaten back and eaten back and eaten back to where it was gonna affect his access to his field and it's gonna come back and want to and I had to pay a contractor almost six thousand dollars to fix that, and he won't contribute to that. So I'm pretty sure he ain't gonna contribute to, to this. Well, there was a bus route a long time, why did the bus come up there, pick up our guests? Back then they put some uh, gravel on each side, kind of give them sliding off with a slip or something. Well, that's, that's not, that's all, that will cost her a separate corridor, caving in. And it's like I say, it's getting narrower every time it rains. So you don't have a plan. Then you got all these bridges waiting on it, so we're probably about twenty-fifth on the list and we'll stay there, cause you got all these other bridges probably start failing before.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So you're gonna, you're gonna lose ground, you ain't gonna gain ground. So you need to plan to gain ground. Instead of having twenty on the list, you need to get a balance of, or you can say five or six.
Well, you remember, when you came in, I'm sorry, but when you came in, we talked about that list, and I told you, those are just like the worst of the worst. We have over two hundred bridges. So those are just the worst of the worst. All of our bridges aren't even on there.
These are just the ones that made the list that are on the replacement. So they are to the failing state. They are not just maintenance bridge. We've got, I, I would like for him to see that list of that, that Roger showed us that had all of the culverts and bridges that are maintained by, and the whole county lights up when you put all of these culverts and the, the field entrances and, and all of those things that are county culverts and bridges there. And you would see the scope of the problem we have. It's not just one here and one there.
And you don't have an answer, how you gonna remedy?
We are working as, as, as quick as we can to get to them, but we, we just can't leapfrog.
Two hundred, you said?
Over two hundred, and that's.
Need work.
That's our complete list.
Well, that's.
Okay, you have good and bad.
Yes, we have over two hundred toes. Those are the absolute worst.
Low water and.
And so I think the point is just that, while yours may not be as wide as you would like it to be, it is structurally sound. So. Yeah, it's, it's hard to put money into something that, that's working.
Absolutely.
Well.
We have the, the width problem on road after road with the older bridges with the big banisters that can't be accessed. And that's safety factor too, on, on those two. So, uh, I don't know what else we can tell you today.
So how, have you got a route of accessing this? Stimulus money or this infrastructure that supposedly is only a million dollars, two billion dollars that the government's allocating?
I don't think a, an infrastructure bill's been passed.
Isn't it?
Not the, not the big infrastructure bill.
It is.
Talk about the federal infrastructure bill?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think that was passed.
So, um, Joe Snyder and I went to a KDOT meeting, uh, last, the week before last. Um, and it's interesting because we apply for cost share programs and grants, and we're trying everything possible. Um, I'm gonna use two eighty-six as an example, because this is the third time that we've applied for cost share. Um, we asked, how can we be successful? You know? They said, get letters of support. So we go out and get fifty letters of support from people in the public. We have our state representatives on board. We have everybody from a local level. We feel like we're, you know, we're turning this good application in, and then when we're at the KDOT meeting, we have an opportunity to talk to one of the gentlemen that sits on a selection committee, and it, the truth hurts, but we were told that we sometimes don't get selected because they don't reward counties that have let things go for so long. And it's, it's hard to hear, but that's what we're facing, is limited funding, a huge list of things that need brought up to par, and we're trying every opportunity to grasp additional funding methods, but we have to start, like, right now, we're, we're working on getting a bond in place, um, to help with some of the roads. We have a plan for roads twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We're looking in the future. They're doing the same with bridges and culverts and putting together a list and, and categorizing them so we can look for the future and have a strategic plan. And once we have some of those plans and homework done, we'll be more attractive because we have the projects. We.
Well, you do. You are making a plan.
We are. Yes, sir. We are. We are really trying.
I come around two or three months and see where I fit on the plan?
I don't want to speak for, but we, I don't know the timeline, but I can tell you we are learning, and when we hear things like we're not successful for grant opportunities, because we've let things go for so long, it deflates us because we're really trying, and we get sometimes inherent problems from years ago. Um, but we are, yes, we are making a plan. We are looking to the future. We are seeing that investing in our homework of engineering studies and letting them sit up there. Um, because now we have a financial director in place also, who is assisting us with grant opportunities. And when you sit down to write a grant, you have to have a plan. We have to, to be successful to, you know, you have to have your engineering studies done. You have to have those things in the timeline of a grant application or a cost share program doesn't allow you to start from scratch and say, oh, we should pick this and let's go get an engineering study. Like, you have to have your homework done. So I, I can assure you that we are building a plan. I can't assure you that we will have an answer for you in two to three months, but I can assure you, we are building a plan.
She should have been a couple of years ago. Awesome.
I can't speak, I mean, I can't speak prior.
It would have been better if it had it done.
I.
About four now.
I'd be curious to know how many of these situations we have in the county. The actual numbers.
They're only, I mean, he's the only one that's come to us with this since I've been here, so.
I know my constituents, I have several people that aren't doing what they would love to do because of restrictions as such.
Because this is our economic driver agriculture, so.
I know there's people that have low water crossings that really aren't, I mean, they have to put loads of rock in every year just to get machinery across different places, and they've had, they've done it for thirty, forty years, and they just, that's their norm for them. So, um, there's no way to access ground, you know, when they've got washouts every year and have to replace their, their, their own low water crossing. And they have it, they can get a pickup there or get something else small into the uh, area, but they can't access it with combines. So, or trailer truck. Okay. Well, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, this is, uh, we try to limit our public time. If you would like to speak more on it, uh, I think that we, uh, you schedule a time when you want to come back, and then that way we have more time to speak.
I'll come back a few months and see what your progress is and your plans and maybe the stimulus money or whatever you may be able to get. And thank you for taking time for me now.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, one thing I just want to point out, and for me, I'm only speaking for me, but as a commissioner, um, when you encounter hard situations like this where we want to help you, but the justification has to stay the same. So like, even when you're talking about federal fund money, the needs are still gonna be there, and the way my brain of justification, it's not gonna change the method, if that makes sense, like, and.
But you should be able to go through the list faster with no.
We should have more progress on the list. However, you're, you're correct. But I'm just saying, like, um, I don't want to feel like you're gonna get a different answer, because that's one of the things I, for me, as a commissioner, is staying neutral to the process and understanding, like, just because someone comes and may be really upset with me and in my, you know, and frustrated at the situation, I still have to remain neutral in the thought process to know we have failing structures, like, the method won't, won't change. But, but yes, sir, hopefully we'll be farther in the planning process.
Like I said, I don't know what you're saying, the list is big, but these are, these ones on this list, they all have alternate routes. So do you think that might pick up my priority just a little bit from some of these?
These are failing structures.
But they have alternate routes, I said.
Right. I, I'm not saying that that's incorrect. I'm just saying that they're failing, they're, they're gonna fall in, they're not gonna be.
But they have alternate routes.
Not all of them do.
Justings on this list.
Not all of them do. I have a bridge right now that is, is failing, is in terrible shape, and it's the only way in, only way out for like seven houses. Now, those are houses. This isn't farm equipment. These are houses. So it's not the only one. Yeah, it's not the only one that does not have an alternate route.
Do you know what's?
And it may not be on that list. I'm just saying that there's one, another one, at least one that we know of, that does not have an alternate route. So.
That's what I'm asking. You know, they have alternate routes, I have that. I was hoping that thing would probably. You know, it's not failing. No alternate route.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next is some minutes. Did you have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I, I make a motion to approve.
Yes, I would second that.
And move the second call. If they were say aye.
Aye.
Comments and committee reports. Casey, you have?
Um, sure. So last Wednesday, I had a senior village QA meeting, um, joint communications board meeting and an economic development advisory group meeting. On Thursday, I had the opportunity to interview seniors from USD three seven, three seventy-seven, um, which was very impressive. They are, they have some really good seniors, um, that are graduating, that are gonna do great things, whether it be in Atchison County or, um, their next step in their journey. Um, Friday, I had lunch with Dustin Parks. He's the president of the Kansas Association of County Planning and Zoning Officials. Um, just had, he's gonna be one of the guest speakers at my District Three, um, educational, uh, meeting on May nineteenth at Elizabeth's. Um, so this was the first time I got to meet him in person and really just in an hour lunch absorbed so much information that he had, um, which I think my constituents will very much um, appreciate. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up is I know that the Atchison, or I had, I've heard that the Atchison County Extension, um, group had had their first volunteer day on Saturday, and there was, um, maybe some confusion as far as the county. Um, the three of us had voted to supply um, a dumpster can for them. However, they were responsible for their own dump fees. So we were trying to help in every way possible. However, that the cans, um, once we sat down on the scheduled dates, they scheduled every Saturday to be a work day for volunteers. Um, and Tuesday and Friday were the only days that we could um, offer assistance with our own county cans. Um, Saturday, we use them ourselves. So the scheduling didn't work out, um, and I pointed them to Martin Trash, because I had talked to Austin, and they have cans that they could offer for up to thirty days to sit tight. So, um, they have more to choose from and options. So it wasn't that the county changed our mind on helping. We, we wanted to help by assisting with a can. Um, it was just the scheduling uh, didn't work out based on the volunteer days. So just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to reflect on the event that took place on Sunday, the Sailor's Memorial, uh, one hundredth birthday celebration. Uh, I, I thought it was an excellent grand event. It was very informative. Uh, the presentation by, uh, Mr. Stutes, the POW, former POW, uh, Effingham, ACCH alumni, um, you know, close to home. You know, when you hear things that people have went through and the time of war, being a prisoner of war and placed, you know, living history, I thought that was an excellent presentation. Um, I think they use the term of, uh, the greatest generation, usually with the World War Two veterans, but it, it's evident that it extends much further than that. So, um, I just wanted to say my appreciations to the board at, uh, at the Memorial Hall and all involved. So it was an excellent presentation. Okay, first up would be Stacy with the so, with manager for the annual review.
Need to get, uh, approval on the annual review. The only changes on it for this year are the two new members. Um, Larry Wilcox will, uh, replace JD Ferris as a representative of the city of the first class. He's representing Atchison. And Larry Meyer is coming in as a representative of the city of third class. He's representing Lancaster. That's the only, only two changes that I have on.
Who did he replace?
We had a gentleman that was coming from Huron that only showed up one time and never came back, so I couldn't even get a hold of him to see if he still wanted to be on the board. So we just reached out to the third class cities, Effingham, Lancaster and Muskota, and then we kind of came up with Larry on our own, and he's willing to serve on the board. So those are the only two changes I have for this year.
I move to adopt the, uh, annual management plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass it straight to zero. Now, is there any to sign or anything?
No, I just have to have minutes to send it to state.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Pruitt. Are you on? There's a PO for Uber and Associates, the invoice for yearly maintenance on servers, uh, which would apply for March twenty twenty-two to March of twenty twenty-three. The, uh, yearly maintenance on servers for the amount of five thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
That's correct.
I would.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next to Shelley Nelson, uh twenty twenty three budget approval.
She is not on, no.
Hmm.
She is not on.
She's not on, okay. Uh, this year is done just a little bit different. She's wanting to have us approve. Uh, officially your twenty twenty three adult comprehensive plan. And the twenty twenty three juvenile comprehensive uh plan grant.
I was. Allow the chairman to sign.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Road and Bridge. Here.
So we just had the uh purchase order and proposal from Swabaton that we discussed this morning. Those are for the biennial bridge inspections. We had fifteen fracture critical inspections and a hundred and thirty three routine for total of twenty eight thousand five hundred and thirty one dollars to Swab.
It's been moving second up. All the say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maybe split out as two.
One was routine and one was practice.
I'll just double check on that. If we get a. Michelle, did we get a P O?
Remind. Not given a disappointed that he gave me the surveyor today.
Okay.
He did give me the P S.
Maintenance Director Brian also will come in earlier. Discuss two different items. So there's a P O. Uh, he asked for consideration of a safer stack ten by five by seven two-story fixed scaffolding tower. And the amount of eighteen hundred and eighty five dollars and eight cents. Do I hear a motion to accept?
No.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then he also wanted uh to purchase. A four ton, five wall mount ductless mini split air conditioner with heat pump. We need two of those. An amount of five thousand three hundred dollars and four cents. Uh, he's asked for two, which the total would be ten thousand six hundred and eight and eight cents. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Hmm.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Yes, pipe repair.
The signature on the back for a chairman.
No, that's. Uh, there's also a. We have a pipe, which is a steam pipe uh located in the here in the basement of the courthouse. Uh, it needs to be, it's been repaired, what, three or four times in the last year. Uh, asking for a new one to be made and installed in the amount of twenty two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero, and I forgot to say that was from Design Mechanical, Inc. Any older unfinished business for the board? I must have this out. Take it there's no county council update. Any need for an executive session? Any more public comment?
I think a motion to adjourn at one thirty six P M.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's three to zero. We are adjourned.